Sir.
The Commissioners' Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on November 2nd, 2021, 10:00 AM, in the Commissioners' courtroom in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. The public may watch the meeting live, facebook.com/Brazos County. First item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag, Commissioner Berry will lead those.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the many abundant blessings that you bestow upon us. Grant us wisdom as we do the business of Brazos County, and be mindful of our first responders and military overseas and at home, our teachers and our health professionals as they combat our, the assault on our freedoms. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. The second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and/or concerns, and I don't know, Roy, did you, where's, there you are. Roy, you want to speak at this spot?
Judge, Commissioners. Election integrity and voter participation is a priority. For the last four years, I have talked to and even made written complaints about some of the actions or inactions of the Brazos County election administrator, moving our voting locations in underrepresented and low-income districts, where some of our elderly and disabled vets are on fixed incomes, often having to wait for family members or neighbors to get off work to take them to the polling place due to limited transportation options. And these polling places are not consist, are consistently moved, placed without adequate signing, or in the wrong polling locations listed on Brazos County website, which I have right here. It is almost impossible for these individuals to get to their polling booths. Last week, there was a precinct moved based on rumors and gossip. Our election administrator didn't even bother to call the pastor of Galilee Baptist Church. He had to make an appearance here in the court to ensure the facts were known. No voter should be asked to contact another state agency with the county election adminis, that's the county administrator's job. Why would she be unwilling to call or email to clarify a simple right-of-way issue that should be covered under Texas Transportation Code Title VI, Section 393? I have an email from text dot that states they are willing to be at Brazos County service on any issue of "Vote Here" signs needed to be placed in the right-of-way. Whether we're talking about a large or small precinct, an affluent or less affluent precinct, convenience and consistency of voting locations is essential for voters, especially in underrepresented or low-income districts where there may have been limited transportation options. It is essential we have someone we can trust maintaining election integrity and voter participation for a strong democracy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other citizen input and/or concerns? Hearing none, we'll consider, was that, was that citizen input? No. Come up. Okay, so, do you want, this is an input. Do you want to hear, or do you want number 16? That, that's fine. Okay, so we will consider and take action on agenda items 3 through 25. Number three is proclamation 21-014 proclaiming November 16th, 2021, as Brazos County Crime Stopper 40th Anniversary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Is there anybody here to receive the proclamation? Whereas Brazos County Crime Stopper Team, sponsored by Brazos County Sheriff's Office, was incorporated November 16th, 8th, 1981, and marks their 40th birthday, and whereas Brazos County Crime Stopper Team, mission is to support law enforcement agencies in their fight against criminal activity within Brazos County communities, and whereas Brazos County Crime Stopper Team has operated successfully, all volunteer organizations, organizations under the guidance of Brazos County Sheriff's Office for 40 years, providing the citizens of Brazos County with anonymous tip line and rewards program that helps to gather information on criminal activity that may otherwise go under recorded, and provide Brazos County, Brazos, the Bryan and College Station detention school district with a T3 app specifically designed by Brazos County school students to make anonymous reports to concerns happening within their schools. And whereas Brazos County Crime Stopper Team has received almost 22,000 tips, helped make 2,900 arrests, and apprehended 677 fugitives, closed over 3,400 cases, and recovered over $3.5 million in property and drugs during their history. Now therefore, we, Brazos County Commissioners' Court, of Brazos County, do hereby proclaim November 16th, 2021, Brazos County Crime Stoppers 40th Anniversary, and join in this special time and recognition of contribution to the citizens and law enforcement agencies of Brazos County, proclaim this 2nd day of November of 2021, by the Commissioners' Court. Y'all do a very good job. Anybody who wants to speak is welcome to come in.
I just want to say thank you to Judge Peters. Thank you to our Commissioners. Thank you Sheriff and Chief for your support. Thank you to everybody from our Board of Directors, and thank you most of all to the community. We would not be able to do what we do without you. You make it possible. You help fund it. It's your information that helps us keep Brazos County and Bryan and College Station and our schools a safe place. So, it's our, it's our pleasure. It's our honor. Thank you.
If you want to take pictures, we can take pictures. Okay, Judge? Put my hat on so the glare won't.
Yeah, put that on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four is discuss and approve resolution of the Commissioners' Court authorizing County Judge to approve the issuance of new Hope Cultural Education Facilities Finance CAR Student Housing Revenue Bonds and project, and the project will be refinanced with proceeds of such bonds.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded.
Discussion, please.
Okay, discussion. Know about it?
Yes, sir. Yes, Judge. Judge, Commissioners, good morning. Thank you very much for first having this item on the agenda and also having me here this morning. I am serving as, our firm, McCall, Parkinson, Horn, is serving as bond counsel on a, on a refinancing of the Park West Apartments at College Station with tax-exempt bonds. This particular item asks that the judge approve the financing after a hearing is held. This refinancing, the county actually approved this project back in 2015 when it was originally financed. It was financed with tax-exempt bonds. The county approved the project. The project, there's, obviously COVID's occurred. There's been some stress on, on, on the apartments. This refinancing extends the maturity of the outstanding tax-exempt bonds, provides some debt service relief for the project. I am going to stress that this particular approval by the county and by the county judge, just like in 2015, imposes no liability whatsoever on the county. If the county does not become a guarantor of the project or the financing, the county's name will not be on the bonds. The reason the county is being asked to approve this transaction is because under federal tax law, in order for tax-exempt obligations to be issued with these type of private activity bonds, the local, a local elected official has to approve the bonds. In this case, it would be the county, and so the sole purpose of the judge approving this particular project and the financing is so that the bonds may be issued on a tax-exempt basis as they were back in 2015.
Then Judge, this has no financial repercussions on the county whatsoever.
Does not impact the county in any way.
Yes, sir.
One more question. The Park West is, is it, its status, is it ad verum, tax exempt?
I believe that it is, because it's still in the University of A&amp;M, and M, and M is leasing the, the property.
But that I. As I understand the lease, the agreement when it was first approved, that was the case, and I was just wondering if it was still in the refinancing, if that changes anything as far as that goes.
The refinancing will not affect or change any of the original terms.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Thank you very much, Judge, and Commissioners, again, for your time.
Number five is appointment and reappointment of the following individuals to the Board of Managers of 911 District. Appointment is January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2023, A. Nancy Berry and B. Lloyd Wasserman.
I move approval of A and B.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is appointment of Joe Manteca to the ESD Number Two for the unexpired term ending December 31, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is reappointment of Mark Crowder to the City of Bryan, Brazos County Economic Development Foundation Board of Directors. Term appointment is January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of the following job descriptions.
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is acceptance of donation from the ranch Harley Davidson Canine Diego, that's Constable Precinct Three, and I think it was for $800.
Move approval with appreciation to Ranch Harley Davidson.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion.
Diego is a valuable member of Precinct Three, and our thanks to Ranch Harley Davidson for their support.
Correct. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is request from Sheriff's Office for approval to submit a request for NRA grant to purchase rifles for deputies assigned to the courthouse security.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is request from Constable Precinct Two for approval to submit a request for NRA grant to standardize the duty weapons program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is consider and take action on the proposed modification of the Texas Herbicide Regulation in Brazos County, removing restrictions from proposed areas because of changes in land usage. All other aspects of the herbicide laws, regulations, and usage remain in place and are unaffected by this proposed change.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. I think that, Dr. Rynch, you had said that, I know that it's, most of the agricultural out there, I think, has changed more to residential now, and really this change would help the homeowners that are out there, because it's not going to impact any of the, the, there's no agricultural operations that are going on close enough to, that this is a good change for that part of the area. That, I mean, I'm okay with that if that's, sounds reasonable. If you want to come up and speak, you're welcome to. I, I know you, you hate having to get in front of a microphone, because.
Thank you, Court, Judge. Procedurally, this requires that you all have introduced it. Mr. Richter and I will then publish it in the paper as according to the standards, and then in 10 days at the next meeting, two meetings from now, then you all will vote and approve that. It will not affect anyone's land usage. As a matter of fact, it actually provides more opportunities for folks to engage, and the laws do not change.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Rynch.
One more question was, or, so this is getting vetted by the master gardeners and the groups that are with agrarlife relative to pollinators and beekeepers and things like that, to make sure that we're not opening up a door for some of the problems ecologically that exist for them?
As a matter of fact, the way the standards read procedurally with the Department of Agriculture, that's why it will be published in the legal notification section of the Eagle, such that if anyone has any concerns or questions, then they will be able to vet those. But to answer your question more specifically, this actually addresses crop production and those types of issues related to the use of these particular herbicides, and the herbicides are not the ones that are probably causing the issues that the pollinators may be concerned with. Those are primarily with the insecticide section of the game.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Want to ask that question? So, thank you very much.
Not a problem at all. Thank you for asking.
You bet.
I don't, I don't know anybody in the state that knows anymore about regulation on herbicide than Dr. Rynch. He's, he's at the top. When you're more than expertise like that, I'd like for it to show off.
It's not a problem. Thank you for letting me work for it.
That's not a problem.
Did we vote on that?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is request from Tax Office for release liability for uncollectible local liquor fees.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is consider and take action, possible action for the approval of real estate sales contract for the purchase of former BISD Administration Building located 101 North Texas Avenue, Bryan, Texas, being Lot 41, City of Bryan, original town site in the Brazos County, Texas, for the sum of $2,388,000, including issuance of a check by the Treasurer for the earnestment of $10,000 payable to Aggieland Title Company.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded.
Discussion.
Yes. I would like to say that I, I think this is a forward-looking project. County is growing. They're not making any more land in downtown Bryan across from the courthouse. This will meet our needs well into the future, and really appreciate the forethought of the, the court on this issue.
Judge, I'm, I'm in complete agreement that this property is in direct location of our courthouse. I think this, this purchase makes a lot of sense. I would like to remind the court that our last needs assessment and master plan is dated 4/7/05. When we talk about the, the needs, I would like to, after this purchase is made, I'd like to consider updating our needs assessment to see how we might use this property.
I think that probably would come next budget year.
And I think we'll address that in the upcoming strategic plan as well.
Exactly.
Well, I, I echo, because I think that we need to update our facilities plan to get us a more current perspective. I mean, from 2005 data?
Yes.
Yeah. It's probably time for an update for us to take an assessment relative to facilities, facilities needs, and those types of things. I think incrementally, we've been keeping up with things very, very well, but this is another pretty significant step, and I think it needs to be incorporated, and the reevaluation of all this thing would be worth our while, and I think would benefit the citizens of Brazos County for what we can provide for them.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of contract 22-060 for Guardian RFID Brazos County Detention Center.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is discussion of the proposed redistricting plan identified as Illustrated Plan Two by the Commissioners' Court. Any amendments necessary to finalize proposed plan for adoption and possible adoption of the redistricting plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Motion made seconded. Discussion.
Judge, I've got numerous calls in regards to this, and the people that I've spoken to feel like they've been disenfranchised as a part of this process. They came to the public hearing, made statements, and those statements weren't, weren't addressed. So, for that reason, I'm going to have to oppose this.
I would like to disagree with my honorable colleague. We heard the remarks. I think all of us heard the same thing, and I appreciate those that had remarks that did not agree with what the majority has agreed to, but I take offense that they weren't heard. They were heard.
No, no, Commissioner, I said they felt that they weren't heard.
That's, that might be.
I understand we have a right to disagree, but I'm saying that's, that was what was, was told me.
I assure them that I heard them and responded to the need and not so much the, the opinion. We heard the facts. We considered the facts, and we're acting on that, sir.
Okay, so we have a couple of public that wanted to comment on this particular item. Susan Law? There you are. Come on up, Susan.
Thank you for making this open for discussion this morning. I, I look at redistricting as part and parcel of our citizens' rights to participate in representative government, and it's the most basic building blogs. And this is a topic that's near and dear to me and has been for much of my life. I could, it was mind candy thinking about what to say this morning. Do I talk about my family coming here 400 years ago and that voting was what they got right? Everybody on the Mayflower in the Plymouth Colony voted, and that was whether you were indentured, whether you were a believer, non-believer, and that voting right brought, brought freedom to fruition for many people who desired it. But then I remembered my mother always saying to me, probably too often, Susan, if you have to explain a joke or a gift, it's not a good joke, and it's not a good gift. And I sit and answer the phone and respond to people. People come into the office of a political party here in town, and they want answers, and they want easy answers and understandable answers. They don't want to be told, oh, it's this, and oh, it's that. They want it easy and understandable, or I'm likely to get a good old country cussin'. And to me, telling people in a growing community with people from the outside that boundaries are a creek is, I better get ready for the cussin', because they want nice, simple answers about what their boundaries are, how do they vote, how do they participate, and I hope I don't have to explain that further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And is it John Book? Is that correct? Come on up and give us your name and.
Name and address, please.
John Book, 8270 Risinger Lane, in Precinct Two, Bryan, Texas. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, today. I appreciate all of y'all's work. I know this is a heated discussion, a heated issue. I am a citizen of this county and have been for the better part since 2003, since I came here as a student at Texas A&amp;M.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you again for having me this morning, and I, as a resident of Brazos County since 2000, since I was here as a student, and in Precinct Two as of this past year, I take great, great concern with the discussion, because I know it's a heated discussion y'all have had. It should follow ETJ. It should follow boundaries that make sense, as previous speaker had spoken about. The concern I have is everyone should be heard, and whether or not we've gotten to the podium today, or earlier in this discussion, for your consideration of this issue. As a Precinct Two member, I think, and I agree with the concerns raised by other members on this, on this Commissioners' Court, we should be having a vibrant democracy, a democracy that doesn't worry about who is who and who is where. We should have, we should not be afraid of strong conversation and strong disagreement. We should come together as a community and not fight. We should argue the issues, not the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Judge.
At the, well, at the risk of keeping a can of worms maybe open, I was, I wanted to offer a, an alternative for us to talk about and consider. The reason, as I had said in our previous Commissioners' Court meeting, is like our speaker has just said, I would prefer to us to have consensus as opposed to division when we make this decision about that, and I think that one of the concerns about the request for Precinct Two changing involves the residents of a candidate for Precinct Two Commissioner, and as that took place, it was, the statement was made that it was purely political for that reason, but there is an alternative to that that I think addresses the comments that we heard from public input through residents of Precinct Two, and increases the identity of Precinct Three more to where it's rural in composure as opposed to, we, we've made a step partway. I think this would be a consideration for further, but if we were to relook at the line and draw that line up Elmo Whedon Road, as I understand it, and the Commissioner candidate is here, if he'd like to address this, that would take out the political redistricting as far as that goes, if the dividing line were to go up Elmo Whedon Road to the creek. I know that explaining that Rushi Creek would be the dividing line as far as that goes, but what that would do is, is it would, when we looked at those numbers, it was demographically neutral, as I remember, and it would take out the concern that was expressed that I think was a line of, of division and dissension about a political reasoning for the request of Commissioner Precinct Two, and I'd like for us to take a look at that again and consider that as an amendment.
So, here's the problem that I see. We've got till November the 12th to get this done.
Yes.
Which is a short amount of time, and, I mean, we took a consensus vote a few days back to what we were going to put on the agenda to approve, and, I mean, if we have to go back to our law firm and have them redraw again, then we've got to put it back on the agenda to, to. Which is a short amount of time, and I mean, we took a consensus vote a few days back to what we were going to put on the agenda to approve, and I mean, if we have to go back to our law firm and have them redraw again, then we've got to put it back on the agenda to deal with it, and we're pushing... You know, and then all those folks that may potentially run for office don't know until we get through that they're going to actually live in a precinct or not. So my recommendation, and that's what my hope is, is we'll decide today where it's going to be, but we don't have the law firm drawing because we thought we had settled that issue a few days back.
Well, my apologies to the court and to the people who were concerned about this decision for not coming up with that amendment discussion at the time the discussion was there, but I believe that that would address the... That proposal would accomplish what we heard from public input and change the perspective of Precinct Three to where it contained more rural as well as now completely urban. We've made a step in the right direction. I would like to see us consider it more, and if I am correct, that does take out the... If we were to use Elmo Whedon Road as the dividing line, which is discernible out to Brushy Creek, then that would create a more comparable district for Precinct Three relative to the composition of Brazos County being a combination of suburban, suburban, and also rural. And I think that that would give each of the four Commissioners a better comparable perspective on decision-making. I think it's an effort to reach consensus, and I do think that that takes out all of the concerns about this being, as was stated, a political gerrymandering.
So I mean, from the beginning, I have suggested Highway thirty because that is the ETJ of College Station on one side, City of Bryan on the other side, and it's a four-lane divided highway, major access into Brazos County, and anybody that drives down there, it's a very easy determination that Precinct Three's on one side, Precinct Two's on the other side. And I've said, I proposed it twenty years ago. Ten years ago, I made the suggestion, but since I wasn't going to be a Commissioner, it really didn't make me a lot of difference. I made that suggestion. It ended up going all the way over to Carter Creek. I think adjusting it back to Highway thirty makes sense because of that ETJ of College Station and City of Bryan. I think that's the most logical, common sense way to do it, rather than, let's say, going up to Elmo Whedon and then turn and then go down a creek. I mean, that to me just... It doesn't...
Well, it's what we have now at Carter Creek.
It's Carter Creek, but that...
It's Carter Creek with a jump across to the next creek.
Well, but Carter Creek is a major flowing creek.
Right.
Brushy Creek is not. It's a dry creek until, you know, we get floods, and Carter Creek is the division between BISD and CSISD, so it is a line, and that's the reason they went to Carter Creek ten years ago.
Okay.
That's the reason. It was because it was that division between those districts. To me, it makes more sense to have the division between Bryan and College Station on their ETJ and city limits on a major highway than it is to have either one of those creeks.
And my logic on some of the requests that I had for Precinct One were oriented towards the identifiability of twenty-eight eighteen, so I understand that logic as far as that goes. But I just offer this as a proposal because I want to, as I had said in the previous workshop that we had on this, that I would rather have us have complete consensus as opposed to that, and that's the only reason that I'm offering this today because I think it takes out the concerns that were expressed as far as this being politically motivated gerrymandering, and I don't think that that was the case, but this would take care of that, and that's why I offer it. Because I'd rather have us have consensus. And I was, you know, it was explained, we're not going to reach consensus, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
May I remind my honorable colleagues that, as the gentleman said, while debate is healthy... We've debated this. The points were made, and we, as a Commissioners' Court, voted for Plan Two as it is.
We did not vote. We gave a consensus.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I remember a vote being taken to accept this plan, and it was a vote of four to one.
It was a plan to put it on this agenda.
To put it on this...
Then I beg the question, why are we still voting on this today? Because there was considerable discussion during that period of time about whether or not we could come to a consensus vote or whether it was a vote on the item. The consensus vote was to move this plan forward, and if you look at the agenda item, Commissioner, with all due respect, it does say amendment in the agenda item, and that's the only thing I'm doing to offer this.
But we have voted.
I had offered some other suggestions that were...
We listened to them.
That were dismissed. It still leaves a differential in population between Precinct Four and Precinct One that I think should be addressed to have it be better, but I accepted that.
The plain truth is, it appears that we're not going to agree one hundred percent on this, but the majority has spoken, and I think that the debate should cease.
Are you calling for the question?
I'm calling for the question.
With that comment, I will certainly agree you're calling the question. I second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries three, two. Okay. Number seventeen is consider and take action on Atmos Energy Corporation utility permit to construct seventy-foot road board for twelve-inch pipeline crossing under Monford Road approximately four-six-hundred and forty-five feet southeast of FM twenty-eight eighteen, sites located Precinct Four.
I move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eighteen is consider and take action on Atmos Energy Corporation to construct sixty-five-foot road board for a twelve-inch pipeline crossing under Smith Tanna Road approximately thirty-eight hundred feet northwest of South Highway twenty-one, sites located Precinct Four.
I move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nineteen is request for tax refund fund for Travis and Amelia Hodge in the amount of fifty-three dollars and twelve cents per Texas Tax Code Section thirty-three point zero one one.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twenty is tax refund application for the following...
I move approval A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twenty-one is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY twenty slash twenty-one fifty-four point one and budget amendments FY twenty-one slash twenty-two five point one through five point four.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
Judge, I did have one discussion item. I was... I wanted to have a clarification. The money for the budget amendment that addresses the purchase, potential purchase of the Bryan ISD administration building is coming... It's coming out of road and bridge, and I know that's... But I wanted to just kind of get an explanation of why road and bridge is where the money is coming from now and how we adjust for that as we proceed in the future.
Okay. There is money in road and bridge that wasn't expected to be spent for roads next year, but in future planning as we're doing roads. So there is money there that would probably not be spent for roads this year. That money this year would be available to use over there and then be replaced in the next year's budget.
Gotcha. And I understand that we did... That was also a similar thing that we did with the land acquisition for the Precinct One JP and Constable Land Two as well, but I just wanted to have a clarification on that for all of us.
That is... That's correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think you voted on that.
Did we... Did we not vote on budget amendment?
No discussion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twenty-two is personnel change of status.
Move approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number twenty-three is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight one 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 zero nine eight through claim number eight one 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 two eight four and claim number nine zero zero three four 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 through claim number nine zero zero three five three six.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We'll skip down to number twenty-six, juvenile report that directors report on detention population. Linda?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. At the present time, we have thirty-two juveniles in detention, twenty-four males, eight females. We have five in med ISO, and that's just per protocol, and we have twenty-two on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-seven is sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Six hundred and forty-eight today. Five hundred and forty-nine of those are men, ninety-nine women. We have thirty-nine on electronic monitoring with eleven pending. We have zero cases in the jail of COVID, zero in quarantine, and we have two employees that are still out.
Wow. You're to be commended. Zero.
Pierce looking forward to the next forty years of Crime Stoppers in Brazos County.
That's absolutely right. So, yeah. Actually, the thanks goes to the men and women in that facility that have been working day and night to get us back to zero, and we hope that we can maintain that, and I know they're working very hard to do that for us. And also, as you said, very proud of our relationship with Crime Stoppers. It's been a great program for forty years and just look forward to what we can do in the future.
Well, then, in the enhancements that I read about, I don't know if you want to go into detail, but I would encourage everybody to read about the enhancements in honor of the fortieth year that are being a part of Crime Stoppers because I think those are going to go a long way as well, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you to the Crime Stoppers folks. I think they've all left.
Sheriff, thank you to you and your staff for the good work you do.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Twenty-nine is call for citizens' input and our concerns. And I think I just skipped twenty-eight was announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none, then we'll go to call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will... Do we have an executive session?
We have one with our class action lawsuit. I don't know that they sent somebody to talk to us. It's anybody from the fraud department.
So we really don't have anything to bring forward? Okay. 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 All right. Hearing that, the next item is to adjourn. Thank you all.